Okay.
And I'll call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Craig Borba.
Present.
Juanita Garner is sick. Al Jones.
Here.
David Norberg.
Here.
Deborah Schwartz.
Here.
Or Arhita.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moves.
A second please.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to.
And while your microphone is on.
You're here?
Yours is on.
Is this mine?
Yeah.
Okay, just go to the comments.
Yes. Thank you.
Can you hear your part?
It's your.
Is it my part?
Yeah.
As time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Library Board and trustees on agenda items, and items of general interest within the subject matter within the jurisdiction of the city. Although the city, although the Library Board of Trustees values your comments per cent to Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Anybody speaking at this time has three minutes to address the board of trustees.
And when you come up, you can turn on the microphone.
All right, how you guys doing, huh? Yeah, yeah, all right. Good start, we got three minutes. Branch over, I'm going to experience the painful three minutes yesterday, it was, it was hysterical here, me and group of people in the audience, they were actually making sound like, ah, he was paying for oh, that three minutes, you guys to think about how they didn't put the packets out? So you all in the area? For the City Council position? So everyone there, it was fully computer at its finest. Literally, you had count, four council members up there that had all the information, no one else had any in the entire place, except for them. So I did, I told them my anxiety. Just evening me up, because I don't know how many people you have, I don't know if they're qualified. What do you guys doing? Ah, it didn't change anything, obviously, but anyway, yeah, let's just, we'll talk about three minutes, right? Oh yeah, dude, minute fifty-seven, perfect, okay, so here's what I got. How do you get on the agenda here? Because I emailed Jeannie and apparently there's some kind of secret that Robert Torvalds' order isn't that you may have that I don't. So first I'd like, you know, to find out how someone gets on the agenda for the Library Board meetings here. Really, actually, something I want to know. So I don't know how I need you guys to actually talk about that, that's number one. Number two, um, is there a current volunteer program? Because I met a guy named Jerry today, who was a volunteer, had a volunteer badge, said that he was gonna volunteer for six to seven years, actually. So, you know, my question is, is there a current volunteer program? And if so, who is in charge of volunteer program? Because I want to volunteer, I continue to say this. And the follow-up would be what I said last month, which would be, is there a timeline yet for, uh, the DOJ on your fingerprints scanning that you're trying to do? So if there's not, that's one where I can easily reach out, I have a contact in Bonn's office, so I'll reach out to the California DOJ, reach out to Bonn's office, we'll get exactly where that process is at. Because that's one that really doesn't take that long. So it should be an easy process for the fingerprinting. Hopefully you can get some update during your time today, uh, during the update, um. You know, my friend Roger came to speak, he's got a call, so he's saying, well, need to know how public code conduct actually works. Need to know that the violation is something that is taken seriously, protected documents, age, law, priorities, and furthermore, that if someone is violated, that there's an actual field process other than what is written right here. Because this is a field process, it's written to the exact person that is going ahead and making the judgment. Like, that does not make common sense at all. So there's some issues that, you know, I'm hopeful that you guys will get there at some point. You know, at our after meeting as well, that'll be great, but there's some kind of communication you guys need to have, and we're all connected.
Is there anyone else that wish to speak to the board of trustees?
Me, yeah. It's about the library. Hello, everybody.
Can you tell us your name too?
I'm Roger Leighton.
Okay. Go ahead, you've got three minutes.
Yeah. Um, I, I, I cannot hear well, because there's, I stole my hearing aid. But I've been going to the library for a long time since I've been here. Um, I just own two galleries. I moved with my partner here. Um, make it briefly, um, the next door neighbor, um, when that coma happened. Um, my partner started reading me about, asking me to close the gallery. Anyway, I got stopped in the Seven Eleven on Perez Road. Um, I was in coma for a year and a half. And I had to learn how to talk, and, um, I'm an artist multimedia. Anyway, uh, um, I'm trying to recoup, I've been homeless for five, five and a half months. And, uh, it's been very hard for me, because I've never been homeless, or been kind of like a come from a good family. Rich, rich guy. Um, um, anyway, I've been going to the library, it distracted me from what happened. And, uh, I left, um, one of my things from the library. Dagor, uh, Kevin is his name. We used to be friends, and now he's, um, she's been kind of like, I'm, I'm, he's up, I'm in the he's watching all the time. Anyway, uh, I saw a lot of people doing a lot of stuff, baton, that, on the library, like breaking a, uh, computer, breaking the toilets, doing, um, major stuff, graffiti. Um, anyway, I left one thing in the, in the library. I, I only do it. Um, I said, well, I'm going to, I'm going for fifteen minutes to Ralph, and I'll be back. Uh, when I came back, he called the cops, they put chakals on me, and the handcuffs, and they escorted me out. That was on Saturday. I was so embarrassed, I wanted to cry, it's never happened in my entire life, I come from Dallas. Uh, we respect everybody, I know you've been in Dallas, people. But we say good morning, good afternoon, and even if we don't like the person, we still respect the person. Um, in a way, I follow all the rules from the library. Um, and then I wait two weeks, because they said then it takes two weeks. And I went back, and he grabbed me from my arm, and he was going to call the cops. And he says, if you don't get, get that F out of here, I call the cops. And I said, but Kevin, I don't know what you're doing to that, because, you know, I haven't done anything. I haven't break anything, I just left one thing on the library. Anyway, he, uh, called the cops on me again. I'm glad one of the cops was a friend of mine. But I was so embarrassed. It was Saturday, and everybody was watching me there. Like if I was a criminal, and of course, now that I'm homeless, it's even worse. And, um, I, I'm not very happy, uh, this guy is doing it personal. I should, so he banished me from the library for life. How is that possible? I haven't done anything. You know, I'll be sure to my, when I leave the place, I pull the chair in there, turn the computer off, I'll leave before they close.
Roger, your time is up. I'm sorry, your three minutes is up. Thank you for the information, I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Now, um, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Okay, Roman numeral four, consent agenda. Would be the minimum minutes, library statistics, donation report, is there any questions for anybody regarding those items? Okay, and I have a motion please to accept the consent agenda.
So moves.
I'm second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Administrators' report. Uh, Roman numeral five, A. Friends of the Palm Springs Library, Nancy's time? On, okay, sorry.
Uh, yeah, Nancy's not here, so I'm reporting for the friends. Uh, the friends have a holiday bizarre this Saturday at the main library from ten to two. They have over fifty different gift baskets that people can buy. And also lots of gently used books, cookbooks, art books, puzzles, DVDs, and so on. All the friends go to support the friends. Um, also, they support Palm Springs Speaks, so we have Fran Drescher coming in January, on the twenty-fifth, Terry McMillan on the twenty-seventh of February. Thank you, Jeannie. And, uh, Billy Dee Williams on March seventh, so that is programmed for by the friends of the library. Tickets are available on palm springspeaks.org. And then the friends will be having a house tour during Modernism. They will be curating the Ross and Chambers House, it was restored. Um, in nineteen forty-six house that was restored, and Ross and Chambers was an architect, he built it, and he worked at, uh, Frey and John Taylor Park Campus. Uh, tickets are available on the library website, that house tour is February twenty-first, and tickets are only forty-five dollars.
Any other questions? Anybody? Um, I had the chance of going to the Temple Grandin, and it was fabulous. Hopefully, the quality that I've heard the last three times has just been great, so keep that up, hopefully it was financially a good move. Which enough?
Yeah.
Okay. And the music was nice, I don't know, we would have that one more time in the future, but that was nice.
We featured, uh, Leanna and Miguel.
Yes.
As the performers, and it was a real fun, uh, atmosphere, it made it really pleasant and nice in be- like during the VIP event, and then in the, in the, in between events, while people got settled in the auditorium. Just real fun.
Very nice, so I encourage.
Great musicians.
Wow, trustees to attend these events when we can. They're great, really great. And it's great that they, it was positive, financial, good, okay. But from the foundation, um, uh, do you want to speak to us now and then speak to us later? We're gonna speak to us once, thank you so much. Okay, library staff?
Remember that one.
Yes.
I'm, um, thank you, I want to take this time to introduce my new administrative assistant, her name is Deena Button. And, uh, I'm so happy to have her, she comes from, uh, um, she comes from, uh, healthcare background and with the county, and you want to say, just say hello.
Nice to meet everyone, and I'll be, uh, Monday through Thursday in the office with Jeannie and helping her out.
When did she start?
Uh, she started two days ago. So today's day three.
She's old hand now.
Yeah, 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 she's pro. So, we're happy to have her, and she's right in administration with us. Um, and, uh, I wanted to add about Temple Grandin, it's such a, it was a wonderful event. Um, the turnout was cra- probably three hundred and fifty people, I think. Um, good turnout, a lot of families, uh, educators. It was just a, everybody was really engaged with the, with the program, I think she was saying, there were like lots of ahs, and yeah.
Great question.
Uh, oh yeah, really good questions, question and answer session, so yeah. We're really excited about the next ones, like, like Julie mentioned, Fran Drescher is coming January twenty-fifth, and that's at the Richard Center. Uh, Terry McMillan, who, um, is fame, in my mind, most famous for Waiting to Exhale, and How Stellar Got a Groove Back. Um, it's coming February twenty-seventh, and then Billy Dee Williams is coming March seventh. Um, Terry McMillan and Billy Dee Williams will be at the Palm Springs Cultural Center. But like I said, Fran Drescher will be at high school, uh, touring. Um, I have posters in the back, if you all have any places or businesses that you might know of that could post the posters? We'd like to get the word out.
Oh, I could post it somewhere.
Good.
Right by the door. Okay, I'll take one on my way out.
Good, because they, uh, it is a fundraiser for the friends of the library, and it all benefits us at the library. Not us, no, us directly, the library.
The library.
Let's be fair. Uh, speaking of the library, we will be closed December twenty-fifth and January first. Wellwood actually doesn't close very often, but the Wellwood Memorial Library will be closed December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth and January first. So FYI on that. Um, we do have our, um, event flyers, um, great things, and Julie's gonna, you're, I'm jumping, gonna do this stuff, but Santa, I have to tell, Santa's coming to town. Uh, December twelfth from four to seven, it is an open house style event, so you do not have to be there at four P M. Anytime between four and seven, bring the family, get dressed, you know, in your holiday best, get your picture, bring your, you know, you'll take your own pictures with your own phone or camera. And I know a lot of the little kids will bring letters for Santa, and tell them what, what they want for Christmas, and and we do fun little craft activities in the children's room while they have to wait, so just a fun festive, uh, evening at the library, and it's free. So it's not very often that you get to get photos with Santa, that doesn't cost you anything. You go to the mall, nothing against the mall, but you go to the mall, you've got to pay for those pictures, so we provide this as a nice community service. Uh, just a reminder, that the library is a passport acceptance agency, and, uh, now is the time to get your passport for your summer travels, um, and the, the processing times are pretty reasonable right now. They've, they've shortened their times, don't ask me what they are, I want to say like ten weeks, seven to ten weeks. Um, but they were thirteen to fifteen weeks or something like that. So, um, the processing times we're hearing are pretty, pretty good. But now is the time to do it, and we have passport appointments available almost every day.
Is this for renewal or is this for new?
For brand new, um, if you have an existing passport that has not been issued, it's within fifteen years of issue. That's still considered a renewal. If it's older than that, you had a passport, and it's been a long time, you have, you have to start over, but.
Mine doesn't expire until the spring, so.
Yeah, but, but watch your travel, because if you make sure that the countries allow a certain, or time, and they're changing some of their rules. So, check your expiration dates, and, um, and we can also give you, um, words of wisdom on renewals too. So our website has a ton of information, uh, also. So be sure to check out our website, palm springslibrary.org, and click on the passports button. Um, and Julie has information about other programs, I'm sure.
Yes, thank you, okay, so I do want to remind everyone that December is craft kit month. So, uh, every week, the kids and the teens have a different craft kit that they could pick up while supplies last, to do a fun craft on their own. And adults can also, so this week, there's still, uh, craft kits available, and then we'll have another craft kit available in a couple of weeks for adults. So adults only do two for the month of December, but they're very fun, they're ornaments, and, um, very easy to do on your own at home. So definitely come to the library and pick up a free craft kit, just come to the front desk and ask, and they will happily give you a craft kit while supplies last. Uh, I just want to mention a couple of quick, uh, two other programs we have coming up, we have a super fun program that we're doing in partnership with Deserted Films, which is a local nonprofit, uh, that preserves, um, vintage and home movies. And they're gonna present Christmas, uh, TV Time Machine on, uh, December thirteenth in the evening at six P M. Um, and they're going to take a look back, they curated quite an interesting collection of old time TV holiday films and claymation and others, all sorts of things, so it's gonna be a really fun evening, sign by everyone to come out. Uh, it's free at six o'clock on the thirteenth, and then we do have our meditation, our once a month meditation class, it's been going really well. Um, and that is on the nineteenth at three o'clock, that's a Tuesday afternoon. Uh, every month, the, um, leader of the, um, class gives us different tips and techniques to try to help, um, if anyone interested in learning different meditation and mindfulness techniques. So it's a, it's been a, a really great program that we're trying once a month, and so come on down, again, it's, it's free. And then finally, I do want to say that, um, we do, we just today, hot off the presses, got the January and February, um, programming flyers out. So, um, lots of great programs to plan ahead into your calendars. Um, so we have lots of different, um, uh, author programs, we have Kathy Strong coming, she's a travel writer. Uh, she will be coming in January, um, we have Drag Queen Store, a drag story hour again. Um, we have lots of different things coming, so, um, definitely check out the flyers at the library. And, and tonight, I gave them to you, so, thank you.
Thank you, questions for staff? Okay. Yeah, all right, um, let's move on to the, uh, treasures report, Roman numeral six.
Yes, you have before you on page.
Turn on your microphone. I need one.
I got a red color one, so I can't tell what is on. Okay. Anyway, you have on the, uh, in your agenda the balance sheet for twenty twenty-four. Uh, there's really been no major change in the last month, uh, an increase of the, the, uh, total fund balance of seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. I didn't see anything unusual or remarkable about this, Jeannie, unless you have something here.
No.
Very, quite straightforward.
Yeah, we're trying to keep it simple.
Yeah. So, um, we're in a good position.
Great.
If, um, you have a percent regarding our investment return?
Yeah, we don't, that's from the city.
You know, the treasurer, the city's treasurer, uh, on their finance pages have the treasurer's report, and it will tell uh, any updates that they have of their, their returns, and.
But I can just write that as an info on that.
Yeah, we are completely lumped in with anything the city has invested on, on money's part.
Because we tried.
Yes, we lost blood on.
Yes. Because we could do better than the city, but anyway.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get that connection.
Motion to accept?
That moved.
Have a second please?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Right, Roman numeral seven, discussion action item, first one is awareness campaign, grant request by the Library Foundation.
You guys gonna come up? So we've got, um, David Sidney and Bill, and you, please, you can borrow this mic.
That's really neat one.
You're gonna do that.
It's our one, one person at a time.
Turn.
My name is Lewis.
Turn on the microphone.
Just nice to see you in person.
It's so good.
Yes. Didn't know you were real people.
We probably ought to be doing this after we listen to, uh, Jeannie's report, because she always gives us lots of information on progress, but. Uh, on behalf of the board, uh, the foundation, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present in your consideration of a grant, uh, so we can launch our, uh, PR campaign and the awareness. First of, of the, um, the foundation and our mission, and also, uh, spreading the word about the fact that there is a renovation project that's underway. And, um, it's well underway. And so we, um, we think the timing's real good for this, and, and we're really looking forward to it, so thanks again. Um, we we, we took the, um, I, I, I did have a proposal, and I, hopefully you've had a chance to at least swim it. Um, I, I'm not gonna go through and read it all, but I'll just highlight a few things. Um, we think, we think that this program is really necessary in our community to differentiate ourself, our foundation, and uh, the fact that we are the primary organization for fundraising for this renovation project, uh, above and beyond what Jeannie's done, uh, with the, with the grants from the state and the city. Uh, and, and, um, we, um, we also think we can help with this campaign to raise the awareness of the fact that there is renovation going on, and blend with a, a number of other efforts on the part of the city and the library and so forth, in terms of, uh, public relations and awareness. Um, we did go through a rather, um, uh, lengthy and, and I don't know if arduous is the right word, but it was thorough. It was thorough. It was arduous, yeah, Al was there. Uh, and under David's direction and our, our, um, uh, committee for communications on the board, uh, a lot of, uh, requests for proposal went out to the Coachella Valley for firms there, and uh, we did get four responses to our request for a proposal. From there, we went, uh, we went and we had interviews and so on, and we, and we, uh, elected to select Kyle and company. Um, number of different reasons, um, the main one, I think, was that they seemed to, um, the four or five of us that were evaluating to get it, if you will, they really understood that it was a two-pronged effort. Um, awareness of the renovation and awareness of uh, our organization and, and what our function is going to be over the next couple of years. Uh, and in addition, they obviously have a very good background, local knowledge. Um, and they were on the low end of the cost spectrum too, which, which was very pleasant to see. So, um, that, that's the organization that, uh, we selected. And so if you go to the campaign overview and goals, um, this is predominantly what they had uh, proposed to us, and, um, this is being refined as we go along, but again, the utilization of a two-pronged approach, um, first on, on the foundation and our role, and then, uh, secondly, on the renovation projects, and then it, it is going to be comprehensive, so they're looking at all different types of media outlet, including, uh, our website, changing our logo, updating it, um, looking at social media, doing, uh, video, uh, so that we could mount that onto Facebook or our website, or wherever we could use those. And so, um, there's a creative element that I think they're working on, uh, very strongly already, and, um, we've had several meetings with them, uh, which have all been highly constructive. And so we're, we're very pleased with, with how things are going. Um, you can see, uh, the key components, uh, the creative plan, a media plan, you know, that's, um, the buy, where, where are you gonna put your, uh, where are you gonna put your efforts, where are you gonna put your, your messaging, and so on, so there's, they're gonna develop that. Um, they're gonna, uh, identify success barriers. Try to give us a, uh, a good overview of the competitive landscape. There's, they're, um, gonna develop a, a scorecard, we'll see you know, how, how finite that could be, but, um, there would be a scorecard that we could share with, with you folks as well. Um, and then, uh, again, public TV service spots. Uh, social media, website, print advertising, probably Palm Springs Life, you know, these kinds of uh, multimedia, uh, 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 multiple media type of an approach, um, that, that they will have. And we think that, um, we can launch um, in the first couple of weeks of January. So maybe, you know, right after the, the film festival, uh, buttons up and, and moves out, we could maybe get some things going. Um, we're very eager to get those things going. We're gonna have, uh, uh, we're gonna be voting on next Thursday at our board meeting on the new logo and, and the web, uh, design point out. And so that's gonna be first, so that we can accommodate, because we know, when, once we go out to the public, we want to drive them to a place where they can donate, and people can start donating right away. So we need, we need that website condition for that. Um, uh, on a side note, we, we've also got, um, a new account, we've converted to a new accounting system to be able to accommodate donations better and track those as well. So there's a lot of things that we're doing that are going on right now, that are quite positive, really. Um, their experience, it starts at the bottom of the page, they, they've worked at the library already, and the tramway, they did a lot of work for, um, the Air Museum, um, Revivals, the AIDS Project here, and so on, uh, as well as Xavier, uh, the prep school there, um, and as I said, that the Air Museum, um, and, and DAP Health, when, when DAP, uh, did the changeover on their, uh, brand. The budget, um, their retainer is, is eleven thousand, the media buy is the big, is the big number here. Um, the creative, you can see, um, the website, we think we're getting a real, uh, bargain here, because that that's twelve months worth of service and support, um, and we were thankful for them for that, so um, we're gonna get this thing going over a, an initial six, seven month period, but they've agreed to hang in there with us on the website for an additional, uh, amount of time. And then we put a contingency, uh, amount in there, because, um, as we develop with them, the approach, and we find out if certain things work, and they're a little bit more expensive, we have, we have some methodology to move that forward. We also are aware that it's a, it's an election year. And so some of these, um, advertisements, uh, might be more expensive than they were a year ago. And so, um, we're mindful of that, and we don't want, uh, we didn't want to derail um, the momentum that we think we're gonna be able to generate with this campaign. Um, so you know, we're, 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 we, we really do feel, and David could probably echo this, he's been in more of the meetings with Kyle than I have, uh, so far. But we're very, um, excited about, uh, how they've grabbed on to what our mission is and what the focus ought to be. We have confidence that, that they understand the, the valley, and we are confident that they understand, uh, the, uh, multiple media outlets that we need to, to touch. Um, so we're looking for hi- high success, uh, uh, with this company, and with our awareness campaign. And so with that, I really thank you for considering, um, our request for a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. our request for a hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. And if there's any questions or David, if you wanted to say anything more.
Sure. I I would like to say in terms of the the way we selected the firm that we did, we 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 put an RFP out there. We got the proposals. The communications committee sat down and scored them on a non. Is it objectively or not objectively, not objectively? Like, there was no opinion in there. They they all get their scores. Just actually, we modeled it after the the system we used to select the architect. And then we interviewed all of them and then went with the one with the highest score. And that's how we picked Kyle and company. And it wasn't, it's actually, it wasn't the most expensive one. The most expensive one was almost twice as much. One of them had no experience doing with libraries or capital campaigns. Kyle is actually low-o. She she did work for Palm Springs Life, the Jones Agency. So she totally knows the lay of the land. And I I there was one of them that I personally felt wasn't qualified, but anyway, I just wanted to make it clear that we didn't just pick one. It was it was really careful.
Yeah, could could I add to that?
Yes.
Am I on or not?
Yes, you're on.
You can make a comment, then we're gonna have questions.
Okay, okay. I just want to follow up a comment because I was at some of these meetings and most of the meetings. I just wanted to to compliment both of you. It was a very thorough and very transparent process. And that was, I think, your transparency was very, very important. It was not easy necessarily to achieve, but you did achieve it. And so I, from the perspective of a trustee of the public library, I'm very, very supportive and very pleased the way in which it unfolded. I think the thoroughness and the transparency is quite important. So thank you. Thank you.
Anything else you wanna share with trustees at this time and then we're gonna follow the questions.
You good? I think so.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. The price differential, was there media buy the same or similar?
I think they were all the same.
Okay, so it was mostly the the creative part that was more.
Yeah.
Okay.
David, you have a question?
I have no questions. I just appreciate the thoroughness of the proposal. Thank you for that.
I have a question. I'm sorry. I apologize before I ask questions. It's terrible. Is the foundation gonna have any skin in this game?
Yes, we already do.
Financially? Out of the one forty-eight that we're paying, is the price higher than?
Oh, I'm sorry. We've already paid. We've already started and we've already paid them. So so I guess.
Is that gonna be deducted from the one forty-eight?
We we would prefer not.
It's a preference.
Yes, okay. We would prefer this would be our net out and that we could sort of hold our powder until we we may need, if we need it, and if we can go further. With them.
When I heard you speak in the past, you were going to at some point hire a administrator or some type. Why are you going with the media first and not the administrator first? Just, I have no preference. I just wanna know what your decision was on that.
That's a good question. I think what precipitated the media or the the awareness campaign was that the library, you know, kind of hit the gas with the renovation project faster than we thought. And we didn't know how long this was gonna take. So we kind of have in our back pocket an interim executive director. So we 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 thought that this would be harder. So we did the hard part first.
And then my last question is how, when I've worked with consultants in the past, I do a I do a formative and a summative evaluation of their work to know if I wanna continue with that consultant. How are you gonna do it with this agency? Who is going to be responsible for doing their formative evaluation? And then who's gonna be in charge of their summative evaluation of this project? Because if it's great, then we may wanna continue it or you may wanna ready to come back to us for funding. But you may wanna fund it. So tell me how that's going to work.
Do their initial evaluation. Yeah, and that that we feel like that's going to be fairly evident. Now, we haven't gotten to scorecards yet. We haven't gotten to measurement yet. But we will. And so to the extent we can objectify those subjective thoughts, we're gonna try to do that. We're we're gonna ask you if you think it's effective. I mean, that may be one way. We may, maybe we'll have a focus group to see if some, you know, the messaging is is hitting the mark. We may be talking to some potential donors. Are are, you know, are 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 we hitting the mark? And and this consultant that David mentioned, I think, would will be helpful in that regard as well. I I wish I had, I knew exactly, I had the scorecard for you, Greg, but I don't. But those are the kind of things we're gonna be looking to do.
David, yeah, so are you?
I mean, Kyle and company built in their own evaluation. So I mean, they know they can expand by them. I can't, but they know how it's gonna work. Like, they're gonna know where the ads are driving, driving the people to our site. So they'll be able to measure whether it's working or not, if that's.
Okay.
Which that's what I was.
Or are we gonna measure if we're happy with them? That's a good, that would be the executive.
Would the trustees be okay if we have a report periodically regarding?
Can I?
Yes.
So in their proposal, I'm just curious because I don't know the answer to the question then. Did they give any estimate of what the return? I mean, ultimately, the the whole purpose of this is to increase the awareness of people give money. I mean, you're you're the primary entity which we're looking to money to help us raise the money for the innovation. Did they have any estimate of what they thought the return of being then whatsoever? No, none, none of the companies would go on on the line. I just wonder because they've done so much in the valley. They have a sense of what people are giving or not giving, the companies, companies, corporations, and there's been a ever since COVID, things are not as robust as they used to be before COVID. So I didn't know.
Suggestion on the reports, how often would trustees like to see these?
Quarterly. Quarterly.
Quarterly.
Every three months.
Yeah, so.
That makes sense.
David, that works?
Yeah.
Jeannie, you were gonna say something?
Oh, I was just gonna chime in too about that, that all the the firms will provide metrics that show hard data about how many hits on a website, how how much traffic, impressions, that there, you have a lot of data. That's our thing. I'd love to share that. And then hopefully the data is dollars, you know, turned into dollars there. Yeah, so.
Okay, so we're December, so the first quarterly would be when? March?
Sure.
March, is that where?
Yeah, that'll give us, well, your meeting's in the early part of the month.
Yeah.
So that's only really two months, so.
What if you say April? Because then you have the first quarter.
Yeah. If you want a three-month look, I think.
And it might be tight because if our meeting is April third, fourth, whatever the date is.
We'll just have to do a cutoff. Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, the the campaign isn't gonna start tomorrow. You know, we we got some work to do before. I mean, we've started with them. And what they've done is incredible, but you know, we're at the very first step. So does this take a motion then?
Yes, it will take a motion.
And I will, I I would move then that we actually approve the grant of a hundred forty-eight thousand to help the foundation implement the awareness campaign.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, do I have any further discussion? Any questions, concerns? This is our biggest expenditure since I've been on the trust.
Oh, well, let's get busy.
Can I offer a friendly amendment to the move over here? With the proviso of the quarterly reports we just discussed.
Yes.
With your second and first up.
Yep, yep.
Okay, there is no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, but we expect big returns from it.
So do we.
So do we.
So do we, but thank you so much.
Okay, that brings us down to on the library renovation. Do you have that? I forgot to send that one page.
No. Call of Silas.
No, no, the page that shows what what they're gonna move things around it.
No, I don't have, this isn't my computer. So I don't have any things, but let me just update you a little bit about what we've all been doing and and trustees can jump into who participated in the scan committee. So it's been, honestly, it's been a little whirlwind of few months with the Architects Group Four. Architecture have been working with staff, the city, community members, they did a community survey, a community open house. So we had two steering committees and we have representatives from the Library Board of Trustees, the Friends of the Library, the Library Foundation, the city. And so we met at the end of October and then we had another meeting just recent last week, November twenty-ninth. And and I, they're going pretty well. We're making progress. The things that we are doing right now is data gathering. And the Group Four is working with other agencies and engineers. So they're working with ARG Architecture Resources Group. They're the, they're local. And they are the ones who are working on the private theater. And their main focus is about historical information about architecture. So they did a site evaluation of our library. They they are, their their main focus is to number one, evaluate the building to make sure that it's still able to stand. Honestly. Yeah. And then they also want to make sure that everybody understands the history of the building, the architect and the the site. So some of the things that are under consideration, the placement, if we if we did get fundraising for an event center, where would it go? If it's on the south side, it kind of blocks the view of the the impression of the main library. So are, we're pretty sure the general consensus is that if we do get an event center, it's gonna be on the north side of the building. And then instead of acting acting as like a block, it would be a landmark. So then it would be kind of the first thing you see at that intersection at Sunrise and Barista. So we saw some pretty interesting ideas for designs, just rough sketches. They were really actually just hand drawn, some of them were hand drawn sketches and brainstorming ideas for an event center. The thing that they are doing with the library staff is is working with us on kind of a floor plan bubble situation. Nothing's, nothing's like super designed, but they've got rooms or ideas and trying to figure out where things are going to go. So that's what you're asking to see. Right. And so it's not, it's nothing, nothing is done. So it's not really shareable at this point because no decisions have been made. But to tell you about, and again, please chime in on the go, I'll let you to chime in on the steering committee or set information that you learned from that.
We also covered the landscaping.
Oh, yes, yes. Rios was there to to talk about the landscaping and kind of give a, give some options and ideas about how to honor the community culture and also our climate and different things. So there were some options and they kind of wanted, got some feedback from the group about preferences and again, nothing set in stone, but it was fascinating.
That is, that's. David comments?
I think you've covered the basic territory. There are some decision points coming up in the not-too-distant future that we'll need to discuss. And Craig, if I remember correctly, the Group Four Architecture Representatives have met with the Foundation Board at this point, also the Friends Board. Is there now a plan for that group to meet with us?
That's what's in the mix.
Yes. Oh, good. The January meeting for the Library Board of Trustees, the architects would like to come and give a presentation to update you on the progress and kind of talk about the next steps. So you'll get the preview that council will get on January eleventh.
Perfect.
So excellent, yes, excellent segue. They they will, they will be here on Zoom. So they'll, it will be a presentation. It will be recorded, so everybody can go back and review it on, and the slides will be shared. So you'll have that for online and that'll be.
Why on Zoom?
They are in Sa- South San Francisco. Still. But they're coming. So they're gonna come.
It's a bookshelf.
They're going to be. They're gonna be in person at the January eleventh City Council meeting. So they will be there for that in person. Again, slideshow and. They will if you need them to, but really, it's just just online is is fine. It's it's gonna be great. Some of the timeline things that we're talking about are that we need to make some decisions. Oh, I should mention, I don't know if we did cover this. I know that we we did talk to you about the survey and the community input. We got over a thousand responses. I never saw that, but I knew you got it. I know, I didn't look. But but we, I do know that they got over a thousand people interacting with community feedback. So that was good. Some of the timeline that we need to do is coming up in January is a decision point. So right now, we are in the schematic design phase, information gathering, kind of brainstorming ideas. Do you like A or B? Okay, B one or B two, that sort of thing. And so that's stuff we're working out with the staff and and as library staff, I feel like it's really important to include them and have them give the feedback about, you know, we 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 live and work in the library and you know, those types of things might not work well there or whatever. Group Four is very good too because they do ninety percent of their projects are public projects for government. So and they're heavily into library projects. Right now, they're currently doing the Santa Ana Public Library. Santa Ana got the same exact grant as us, as as we did. Almost the same amount, kind of a similar project, older building. They wanted to do the Grant Plus. Fix up the library. So they're in a very similar situation. They're ahead of us. They're already permitting the permit phase. So we can look to them to see what kind of what they're doing and how much things cost. And this firm engages cost estimators that are doing live active things. So we're, I think we're gonna get some real good estimates. So right now we are going to be this month in December, I'm going to be working with architects and our city engineers to come up with the next step as far as contract amendment for the architects to take it to the next level. We've gotta come make those decisions. And we're pretty sure the decision is that we're gonna focus on the main library and the J C Frye Building. And then if if we get, if someone shows up with a giant check for an event center right away, it'll be part of the plan, but we think that that's gonna be the fundraising phase portion of the project. We still want it. We still think it's really important, but we think that it can, it can be fundraised and probably just added on. I mean, I think that's what the foundation, they're probably all in agreement on on this, I think. So council's gonna get a presentation January eleventh. You're gonna get a presentation first. They're gonna get it as well. And then we're, we have to decide that that's the next step. We've gotta get the funding for the rest because the grants, the grant funds only cover infrastructure. It doesn't cover anything else. And so we have a lot of gap. And so they're gonna talk about financing, funding that, pooling all of our resources to take it to the next step. So that's that's kind of what's happening. And then if all goes as planned, we're talking about going out to bid next December. I mean, it's gonna take us all that time to do all the design work and the bidding and the permitting. So. we're talking about going out to bid next December, I mean, it's gonna take us all that time to do all the design work and the bidding and the permitting, so. Twenty twenty-four will be the planning, if all goes well.
And in the big picture, the things we're thinking about doing, we could stagger some of the activities or buildings and not have it all done at the same time.
Yeah, our goal, our hope is that we can do everything that's needed to be done inside the main library at once. Now, parking lot, it, maybe that's something that happens a little bit at the end, you know, we do all the important grant funded inside stuff, we fix the landscaping and the lighting at the very end of the project, so that we don't mess with our grant deadlines.
This will give the foundation an extra couple of weeks to write.
No problem.
Yeah, um, and, yeah, any uh questions?
You know, being part of this group, it's, it's really exciting, seeing the ideas they come up with, they're very creative and yet they're extremely practical on what things cost, so it's, it's, it's great, so.
Yeah, we're gonna see the presentation.
Do it all.
Oh, I do wanna talk about, um, I, I wanna alleviate any uh worries or fears about the, the way the library will look. Uh, after the renovation, I, our plan is that the exterior will look very similar, we're not planning to knock out walls, cut into it any, in any way that, that I know of, uh, the plan is to, on the exterior, freshen up the paint, um, it, fix up the patios or create patio space. Um, our west patio, we think that that could become a cute little children's patio or family focused patio, um. Bringing our community room to the front of the library where the current children's room is would create some patio space, moving the restrooms to where administration is, would allow the community room space to connect to the public restrooms after hours and um, you know, so the oasis concept of our library, when you um, our, our architect David Schenk talked about this perfectly and described the library perfectly, it's like he, he channeled um, William Cody, when he talked about how, what the library, what, how it was designed, it was designed like an oasis, so you walk through kind of this dark entrance and then you're suddenly in this big oasis, and so we've got the skylights with the light filtering down onto the Lacroix pond, which used to be a fountain, it wasn't a croix pond to begin with, it was a fountain, but you know, you've got these large ceilings, clerestory windows, so you've got the, kind of the peekaboo mountain views, got this nice oasis inside, so all of that will, is still gonna be there, it's just some of the side rooms, you know, all those side areas, we'll kind of just uh shuffle around to make the library more efficient, you've got wasted space in the computer room, that could be a nice kids' room, our community room is too small, we move things around, the restrooms are too small, but we can't keep them where they are because they won't fit, so we have to find a new space, so then it creates this domino effect of rotating rooms, but we wanted, want to alleviate any can, community concerns that the library is still gonna look like the library. And it may be, it'll look like the library did, you know, when you drove by in nineteen seventy-five, it might look nice and new and pretty, so. We want it to be a showplace and we wanna honor the architecture that's there now. So we don't want anybody to worry or panic and, because you're not seeing anything yet, we're not we're not quite ready to tell everybody which room is gonna be where, because we're not, we haven't decided. Okay.
Any questions?
Longest report ever.
Thanks for that presentation. Um, we'll go to Roman Nummo eight, which is committee reports. Um, I'm not sure you tell me, has measure Jane met and any issues come up?
Then we have that.
Uh, that's the only committee I'm thinking of that.
The foundation, but I missed that meeting, I had a conflict, so I was never to attend.
Okay.
I, I think we just heard the information that we would share as the building committee.
All right, uh, there are no committee reports, trustees, staff comments, trustees first, any comments on any issues? Staff, any more comments?
I will not be at the January meeting, so Lisa is going to run the meeting and Julie will be here too, no, Julie won't be here either. Lisa's got the show, so the next meeting will be.
And for that meeting, you will have your own microphone.
January third, five thirty, so. That's it.
So do you have any conflicts with that date?
No.
When the architect's been confirmed for that day?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
I'll be.
I have a problem with not knowing who's directing the choice, I guess.
I have the same problem. All right, I'm gonna, I will be at that meeting and I'll also be at the Friends next week. If there is a meeting.
Yeah, there is, I will.
It's December twenty-first.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, we're just, Wednesday, I thought. Oh, we have a journey, yeah.
Well, we're journeying for me, so you gotta go.
Comments, questions, concerns? Okay, I will join the meeting, uh, we're scheduled for January third, five thirty, which is Wednesday, and also we'll be on this. Room, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Great, thank you all for your attendance, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And David, when is the next?